But at the end of the day, I'm really a human being, a part of this natural world who has responsibilities, just like trees have responsibilities and the ocean has responsibilities, human species has responsibilities. And then the more I learned about our watershed, about our tree canopies, about our biodiversity, the more I'm realizing, oh, wait, I'm part of that. Oh, wait, I'm overreaching in that. I have abused, right? I have extracted. But if we can align our efforts to not just think about humans, but everything that is needed for humans to thrive, right? That's where we went.
Hello, Boulder and the wider world. This is the Sharing Boulder Podcast. My name is Philip Bogren, and for episode 39, I spoke with Taisha Adams, who is a servant leader, environmentalist, social justice advocate, and an amazing human being. She is also running for city council this fall. I sat down with her at her South Boulder home, and we had a long conversation covering a wide variety of topics, including her growing up in Northern Virginia, her work as an environmentalist, and as a commissioner for the Colorado Parks and Wildlife, the police oversight panel, and housing, among many others. I admire Taisha for her holistic approach to understanding and solving problems, and her tenacious insistence that everything is connected. I hope you enjoy this conversation with Taisha Adams.
Taisha, welcome to Sharing Boulder. Thank you so much for making time today to be on the podcast.
Thank you very much for having me. It really is my pleasure.
You bet. You're running for city council, so maybe introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about why you're running for city council.
Of course, of course. So where should I be looking? I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't, we didn't talk about that before. We're just chatting. I was just saying, like, who am I speaking to? Am I speaking, okay, I can talk to you about it. So tell you about, got it.
The millions of people on the internet.
Ayy! Around the world. So my name is Taisha Adams. I use she/her pronouns. I've been living in Boulder, Colorado for 11 years, and I am a servant leader. I am an environmentalist. I am a social justice advocate. But at the end of the day, I'm really a human being, a part of this natural world who has responsibilities, just like trees have responsibilities and the ocean has responsibilities, human species has responsibilities. And I am definitely motivated by a passion for, and a balance for, or rather, a passion for harmony, a passion for balance. I grew up singing in choirs and just music and theater. And, you know, there's something about the arts that really helps you to kind of see how all these disparate pieces can fall into place, if you will. So some of my earliest memories are playing in the mud and trying to make little, like, breakfasts out of mud. So, you know, you make, like, the thing, or, you know, I grew up in Northern Virginia, which is, in the early 70s, was, you know, forest, essentially, and a few little suburbs. And so we lived in a suburb called Springfield, and that is really where, so I ended up kind of telling you my story. So this is how I am. I'm like such a storyteller, and so, you know, I, and actually, I say that's my strength as a candidate. You tell me your one thing, and I'm like, oh, let me show you how that thing fits into this overall scenario, so that, you know, it's not sitting in isolation, but it's really a part of this larger ecosystem. And so, as I said, I grew up in a very nature-rich setting, and I think that's one of the things I love about Boulder. It is a very nature-rich setting. Similar to there, I'm very mindful about that balance between humans and our stuff, our houses and our buildings and our, right, and our parking lots and our roads and our bike lanes and...
Is Springfield within the orbit of Washington DC? Is it kind of...
It is, it is.
Is it close to Chantilly by chance?
It is closer into DC, so it's about 30 minutes in DC, yeah. And so, again, I had that balance. I had the opportunity to go to a city and have, you know, the Smithsonian and... And, but where I was living was very, you know, racially and ethically, you know, not diverse. So, but Washington DC was. So you had, you know, it was a really nice balance there. And I think, you know, I think here, the balance between Boulder and Denver, right? You have this Virginia.
Yeah, Virginia, is it a primarily white community at the time?
At the time, now it is like a very racially and ethically diverse community. It's so, it is inspiring too, right? I think of Boulder and, you know, the time I got here 11 years ago, I'd see a black person like once a week. Now I see, when I go out, like, every day, right? And there is something very important about being seen. You know, I think of the film that Katrina Miller put together, Her and Others, called This is Not Who We Are. And it came out a few years ago, really, I think they had already actually been working on it, on something like the idea of black in Boulder, and then the incident with Zaid happened, and that really sparked, again, going back to cycles, this renewed, this resurgence around public safety, around accountability, around making sure that the systems that we have in place are meeting the needs of everybody, right? And, and so that was really something that, you know, kind of sparked up a thing.
You, you kind of really know how the rubber hits the road on this, because you, you've been part of the, the police oversight panel, right?
I have, I mean, and that's really, you know, I had been very active at the national and the state level around education and environmental issues, but when that incident had happened, and even on social justice issues in other places, but when that had happened and I'd seen, oh, wait, something's happening in my backyard, and I'm, well, similarly, right? Injustice anywhere, and if it's in my backyard, that's, you know, that's as important as any other place. And it really inspired me to, to be on that inaugural Boulder Police Oversight Panel with some incredible community members. And I believe it is one of the most, or it is the most racially and ethically diverse kind of panel that, compared to our Boulder.
Of the advisory boards.
Well, and of the advisors and the boards and commissions that the city of Boulder has. So again, you know, I think of, people see it as, oh, this public safety, and it is. But it's also innovative for Boulder from the perspective of having an advisory entity that is more representative of the community, right, that's being served, right? And I think that's something else. When I think of, to your earlier question of why I'm interested in running, sorry, I did not forget about it, but, but again, I think having, having a better understanding of who I am, I, I hope it's easier to see why I would want to be able to do this, you know? It's not that incidence, right? I've been doing social justice ever since I came out of my mother's womb. You know, as soon as I found out in that, in that town that I lived in, the city, you know, we were one of few black families there. And so it was very evident from a very early age that I was an other in at least one way, right? And so, you know, it started to build that cultural competence that I think is really, really important for all of us to have in order to be able to better relate to each other, right? If I not only see you as a white person, but I can also see you as German, and who is English, who has this, and, you know, is multilingual, who is a father, who is a, right, then I can relate more easily than you have this one policy position and I have this other policy position, right? We're more intertwined than that.
This is something you've talked about a lot, is just building relationship with your approach to, to the, the community and, you know, voters. But also, I assume, like...
Every single thing. We are, I'm, and it goes back to when I started, you know, patting the, the mud, making the mud cakes or whatever, right? Like, it's that really, being on Colorado Parks and Wildlife healed that relationship in ways that were necessary, right? Going back to, when I first moved here and I saw those flatiron, I thought, ooh, I can't wait to climb on those and run up those and, oh my gosh, I'm gonna have so much fun. We're gonna bike around them. We're gonna, right? This is mine. I go, oh my gosh! And then the more I learned, right, about our watershed, about our tree canopies, about our biodiversity, the more I'm realizing, oh, wait, I'm part of that. Oh, wait, I'm overreaching in that. I have abused, right? I have extracted. That's changed the way I recreate. That's changed the, so it's not like, I'm coming for it. It's more of like, oh, we get to do this great thing together, and because I get to do this, I have a higher responsibility to make sure that I'm sorting land, wildlife, and waterways, and I'm not... You know, we have a one light rule in our family, so like, only one light at the housing, in the room you're in.
Yeah.
I was like, when I heard that, I was like, wait, that's a thing? Right? But of course, that's a thing. But it's not a thing here, because it was abundant. No, we just need to be responsible and respectable.
I think this theme of how we recreate in the environment is not something that's come up on the podcast before. But it's something, but it's something I think about a lot, because it's like, we, we kind of design our lives around our, our four-wheeled SUV so that we can go up into the mountains on weekends. And, and, you know, I've talked to so many people who are like, oh, yeah, I could, I could, we could have one less car, but we need our, our, our mountain weekend car. And there's a, there's an aspect of that which is like, yeah, I appreciate that you want to go spend time in the mountains, but there's this extractive aspect of paving, paving the wide highways and burning the rubber and the, and the gasoline to get up in there. And I don't know, I feel like we need, we need kind of more holistic ways of thinking about being in nature than, than just being the weekend warriors in our SUVs, but...
Well, no, and there's actually work being done at the state level around this, and I'm happy to say that I'm a part of it. So I am actually serving on the Colorado Office of Tourism Destination Storage Ship Advisory Council. And their whole goal is balancing conservation and recreation. And they're actually going to, they're in the beginning initial stages of doing a statewide assessment of, or an evaluation of recreation and just kind of some of the impacts on water, energy, and those kind of, you know, just from a consumption perspective, because I don't think that, we don't really have that type of information by recreation type. So I think there's a lot of assumptions that we make. You know, I made an assumption around like those loud SUV things and the HOV lane things, and that can't be good for wildlife. And I was talking to a biologist, and they were like, actually, when you're just walking and then you pause for a long time, that's actually more disruptive than when they like zip by. And I was like, oh, I'm in this, right? And so, like, they were like, even just the trail itself, I was like, oh, you know, again, it's these things that, for us, they're normal, but they weren't, they, they're something we added to the ecosystem. And I think, you know, even every single tree that you see that's not up there.
Yeah, we, we put...
Right? And so we have that responsibility as well. All these trees, all this. So that's when I talk about going back to the policy and what inspires me. I come from a family at first. I come from, my mom was the first to integrate the high school. My grandfather's one of the first folks to have a thriving engineering business in Northern Virginia at that time. And so there's a, you know, I come from a family that's used to hearing no. I come from a family that's used to being told that, you know, well, this is a system, you gotta do what you gotta do, or... And it's like, no, these systems aren't designed for what we need right now. I'm not going to argue with you about it. There's plenty of research that backs us up on, on what the need is to move forward. It's really the will, and I think that goes back to relationships. If I don't know you, it's easy for me to throw people under the bus or move them over. I think I know better. But, you know, again, going back to Colorado Parks and Wildlife, the opportunity to meet different types of recreationalists, right? To meet the birders and the cross-country skiers and the, right, and the hunting, and Bob, that's Bob. So that's Bob. Bob's awesome.
This is a common theme on the podcast.
Bob is letting us know. Bob, sweetheart. I know. Well, good thing that it's not, this is, I don't know if you can see Bob, but Bob's, Bob's right here, and he's a cutie pie.
He just needs his butt scratched.
Yeah, yeah. You know, he's just letting us know there's something out there. And to that point, going back, you know, we are in the urban wildlife interface. And I think that's another critical component for us to keep in mind. And so it's not about degrowth, and I don't want a big population here, but we do have a responsibility. You know, we have bears in our yard, bears, deer, coyotes, and we're happy, because, and we don't have a fence. There's not a lot of, you know, there's, there's a need for more habitat as we are building more. And again, it's that balance. It's not one, it's habitat for all. Habitat for wildlife, habitat for, for every species needs habitat, right? Watersheds need habitat. They're like, everybody needs it. And so going back to the Destination Storage Ship, we're excited to, to also bring these communities together to talk about it. This is also happening at the regional partnership level through the Department of Natural Resources. So again, in the governor's office, there's really efforts across the board, but it's the awareness and understanding. Like, you know, when I talk to people about it, they don't know. And I'm like, ah, and it's not like, they don't care. There's a lot going on.
How did you get involved? Can you remind me what the name of the, the organization you just talked about with the, the parks?
Colorado Parks and Wildlife?
Yeah, and then how did you get involved with this, it's a committee or...
It is a commission.
A commission.
No worries. I didn't know, I didn't know either, when I, I, I did not know they existed at all. So let's just start there. And this goes back to relation and who you know. And even though I had been an outdoors person and all of these things, I had no idea who regulated our, our park system, our state park system. I had no idea who was in charge of managing wildlife in our natural resources. And, but again, when Governor Polis came on, you know, he was really looking to make sure that our, our boards and commissions were more representative of the communities being served. I was appointed as the first African-American to serve on the Colorado Parks and Wildlife Commission, which had been in operation for 122 years, that agency. And so, you know, and the last black man was like in the 90s or something. And so, again, just recognizing that there are voices missing, but I'm also a recreationalist that has a balance with, you know, habitat and all these things. So very much aligned and thinking from that perspective. And so that's what got me on it. And, you know, I, I applied, and I was an outdoor Afro leader, and so I was working with bringing people from, you know, marginalized communities out, and not just out in nature, but reclaiming the cultural aspect as well, right? That we have, we African-Americans, Asian-Americans, right, everybody, yeah, has a rich outdoor nature-based history, right? Heritage. We're not the, everybody has an outdoor heritage.
We all need to be outdoors.
Every single one of us, even here in Boulder, right? Even here in Boulder, there were black homesteaders, and even before them, before Columbus, right? And so I just always, and going back to this film, This is Not Us, it has been such a healing thing for me, a healing film for me, because that film not only showed the, the, brought to light the injustice around how policing is, is inequitable, right? Here, here is a student doing his job in front of, in the building where he lives, being told things, and, you know, it escalates, 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 and then his boss comes, says, oh, yes, he works for me. No ID was asked of this man. No, just takes their word for it, right? And it goes for that trust, right? Who do I trust? Who do I really know? And so it's not enough to just change a law or to put a policy in place. People do the work. It's starting to rain, but I'm okay with that.
We thought the rain was going to be easy to ignore there for a minute, but the rain wanted our undivided attention and for us to get wet. So we quickly scrambled to move to a protected spot and resumed our conversation in the shade of a covered porch.
Taisha, welcome, welcome to part two of this, of this episode.
Part two.
Part two, part two.
All right, let's do it. Let's do it.
You have a new accent for, for part two.
I thought we were changing characters. No? Aww!
You're gonna interview me now, right?
Well, I talked about being in theater and film. I meant that. All right.
I did my first theater, community theater thing just a couple of weeks ago.
Nice! How was it?
Oh, man, it was so fun. I really, I really had a great time. It was really, it was really lovely. It makes me want to do some more.
Nice, nice. And again, see? Joyous. Just joyous. So where would you like to go next?
Um, I always like to talk about housing. That's, that's top of, top of mind for lots of candidates. But when I asked you what was sort of like your big thing, you talked about climate. And so maybe, I don't know how much these two relate to each other in your mind, but I would love to dive into climate change and how Boulder needs to like do its part to lead in this area.
Oh, I love that framing. Yes, that's exactly what we need to be doing. We need to build on our incredible, incredible history. Oh, we're gonna have to give, take this. So Bob is also with us. Okay, so housing.
Yes, climate change.
How many, well, and, and here's the thing, and, and climate, right? So the way I've been framing it is almost from a habitat for all or housing and habitat for all, because these two things are inherently linked. And so when I'm going into any, you know, policy decision-making opportunity, I'm thinking about people and planet. I'm thinking about how does this one issue impact both people and people being the diversity within the diversity of people? How does this impact high wealth, low, mid wealth, low wealth? How does this impact people who are on the west side versus the east side versus north versus south, right? I lived in North Boulder for eight years. It's very different culturally than the south, right? Our east is building out more, right? Similar to the west. And so, and I've been down on the, in South Boulder for about two years now, so still kind of getting my way, but just recognizing that people is not a monolith either. And even when we're talking about the unhoused, that is not a monolith either, right? You know? And so, again, I just want to offer, when I'm talking about people, I'm talking about all people. When I'm talking about the, the habitat and, and the planet, I'm really talking not just about, you know, oftentimes people talk about the trees, our tree canopy, our urban tree canopy. And I think it's one of those things that people just have this resonance towards trees, and so it's easier for people to understand trees. But we also have, you know, a significant reduction in our overall biodiversity around the world, and even here in Boulder, which is hard for people, because it's like our library district where we had that big fight. And I'm so happy it landed where it did, because I knew that even though our library, if you just look at it, it looks all big and beautiful, and it's on the river, and you see the creek underneath it. When I talk to staff, when I talk to the volunteers, they're like... Right? Similarly, right? I feel like, oh, you see our flatirons, you see? And you don't realize that 20% of our tree canopy is at risk. You don't see the significant reduction in our insects, right? People think of bees and pollinators. Yeah, that's one, but there's also just insects in general, right?
All kinds.
Um, and so, you know, or even just the water. You know, I've done a lot of work when I was on Colorado Parks and Wildlife, took advantage of every single opportunity provided to us as commissioners to learn anything related to natural resource. I was there, right? Whether it be CSU, NOAA, Forest Service, I am in those rooms, listening to the very best in the field, but I'm also listening to traditional ecological knowledge, right? Going down to Mountain Yoot Reservation, going into Powwows, going to, you know, I'm starting to build a relationship with our NORF folks here, Native American Rights Fund. There is a tradition of stewardship. There is a tradition of kinship worldview, where this is not my playground, these are my relatives. I'm playing with them. I'm not playing on them. I'm not responsible for them. We're responsible for each other. So that's where I'm saying, I'm, I'm excited about the campaign, because, yeah, I can play the housing conversation. Yes, we can, I am for taking, getting off of those limits based on kinship, ironically, because we're all kin. Ayy! Right? I am for increasing, you know, the, you know, if the lot can accommodate, you know, a duplex, right? Everywhere, I think that feels good, just, you know, but can triplexes and biplexes and eightplexes be everywhere? No, because we're, we, we're not the only species here. And if we do that, because we've seen that happen, that's how the Dust Bowl happened. The Dust Bowl is a, was a reaction to humans, people deciding, we need, our needs are more important than every other species needs. And so we're going to mow down, you know, all of Iowa used to be a forest. Much of Oklahoma, forest. And we took all of that. We, and then we monocropped it, right? And then, right, and then again, this is all against indigenous wisdom, all against those who came from other traditions around the world, who knew that this was not the way. But we did it anyway, because it was quick, it was easier, and those were hard times. I'm not going to take that away either, right? We made a decision to survive. We, I didn't do any, I don't want to even hear, but anyway. My larger point is, is going back to this housing situation that we have here, and our, our, our history in the Dust Bowl is, they made a decision to prioritize humans over everybody else. And for what? I think it was like three to five years they were living in dust. Is that what we want?
No.
Because same with the airport, right? We have a great opportunity there. But if we put all housing, as much as we can, is everywhere, Dust Bowl. That's exactly what is going to happen. Not in that way, but just this concept of if we only prioritize ourselves and don't have the same amount of investment, because again, we have overbuilt without having those considerations for land, wildlife, and waterways, right? And by that, I just mean, many of our buildings are, you know, not energy efficient, right? And even our governmental buildings aren't energy efficient, some of them, right? So our inventory is actually quite old, and so there's an opportunity there. But this is where I get excited about Boulder. This is why I chose to live here. Not only do we have some of the most world-renowned research institutions in the world around climate, right?
Yeah, exactly.
Around climate. We also have incredible technological prowess and interest. We have deep ecological and traditional knowledge that is ready and at the precipice, right, to reintegrate. We have an incredible learning institution, not only with our colleges and universities, but with our high schools. Our high school children are ready to go, honey, right? But if we can align our efforts to not just think about humans, but everything that is needed for humans to thrive, right? That's where we went. So yes, I want housing, but I want us to have green roofs. I want community gardens everywhere, not like...
White roofs, perhaps?
Right, I want, I mean, but not just white. I mean, I actually need us to innovate on the cooling aspect, on the energy reductions, on the, I mean, it's, it's not just, you know, I think of the housing that is over in between, over, off of foothills, you know, up north, there's that housing community that's right there over by the highway. Sorry. You're not familiar. It's fine.
Well, I mean, I am, but...
I can't remember what it's called, unfortunately.
Boulder Junction?
Yes!
Oh, okay, Boulder Junction.
But it's like the, more the eastern side, not the, where they're starting to build out more and finishing that latter part there. But anyway, my larger point is, is when I look over there, I'm just like, wow. Like, I love that there was such, you know, consideration into the fact that it needed to happen, that, that the quality of the, you know, community center and all the, I just appreciated a lot of the infrastructure and considerations. And, you know, I'm always thinking about how can we innovate to make this a more green building?
Yeah, how, how green, how green was the construction process?
I mean, I don't know, but I...
There's also another aspect.
I feel like we have a responsibility there.
I also feel like, equally importantly, if we're gonna build new housing, I want it to be really community-rich and not just, you know, people, people... It needs to have organic community that, where, where there's some street life and people get to know each other, because that's how you build resilience and build social connections, you know?
Well, this is why I was talking about the gardens, right? I mean, again, I feel like this is a really rich opportunity to, you know, and, and we have a history of that, right? There's other parts of Boulder where there is this very rich community garden, traditions that are all around. So why can't we replicate that when we're building new things, right? And so, you know, I was at, even at a CU Boulder, you know, sometimes their professors will talk about their research. So I went to one of those, and one of the professors was talking about like, she's doing these studies on concrete and like innovating on just concrete, because apparently it's like porous, and it could be more eco-friendly if we da, 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 da. And I was like, oh, I know, building materials? We can, right? And I was just thinking like, how can we innovate and pilot different components in, you know, different resilient cities, resilient infrastructures? That's what I was saying about Boulder, is that we have such a diverse set of intellect in so many different things from, and it could be academic, traditional ecologic, lived experience, but combining this knowledge to address these issues and bring housing back into that larger conversation that we need to be having. Quite frankly, it's a privilege to, for us to even be able to only focus on housing, right? It's a privilege we won't have for very much longer. We already, I mean, just from this porch, I saw a fire, the Marshall Fire down there, and then we couldn't see from this window, but if you go from that window back there, the N car, right? And so, and, and that was in December, right? So I'm not gonna just build housing everywhere, right? Because, right? And so, again, I think that it really is a question of, one, how do we get more density in the house, in the areas that we already have without compromising the wildlife corridor, right? That's really the balance component there that I'm interested in.
I think the, the occupancy is, is one.
That's gonna be huge. And that's a low-hanging fruit.
That's a low-hanging fruit, yeah. Because, because like, there's actually a lot of vacant space inside our very, inside our very large houses, right? Like, a lot of, a lot of people live one or two... Like, uh, a lot of, a lot of people live, one or two people in a large house, lots of empty bedrooms. So that's not really ecologically friendly at all, right?
Although there is something I think we need to be thinking about too, and since the pandemic, it's more relevant, but as somebody who's worked remotely for fifteen years, almost, like, I live and work here. One room is my office, one room is my thing, one room is his office, right? Like, it's just, you know, you have to meet people where they are and recognize that people have different living situations similar to, but at the same time, like, we are very mindful of it. Oh, okay, so we do this. So, okay, we have one light, we have to do this, we have, you know, what are you doing to mitigate when you're overusing? When you have too much? How do you lessen that carbon footprint? If you can't do it there, where are the other places you can double down even more? Going back to this stewardship thing, right? Uh, recre- the stewardship tour, um, what was it? Destination stewardship for the tourism and balancing recreation. You know, people will now have this like, uh, if you get your airline my, um, ticket, you can do a offset.
Sure, yeah, like a carbon offset.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Look at this, yeah.
Quote unquote.
That's, mm, you know what I mean? It's just, it's a thing that we made up as humans to um, and and although, again, there is some science to that, that I don't think the science is as rich as how much we're relying on this carbon offset as a concept. It's not, you know, the the research base is not as strong as how much we are using this as a solution. And so therefore, we're really thinking differently, you know, again, that team is thinking differently about how do we, you know, cuz this is a huge tourist destination from around the world and we want that to happen. But we want them to do the carbon offset, we want them, you know, it's more than just, you know, cleaning a trail once, once a year or even once a month. Right? It's that, it's that leave no trace principles, it's that, um, you know, real reverence. Not just when you're out on the trail, but when I'm in my own home, when I'm in somebody else's home, when I'm in a public location, when I'm in a private location, I see, you know, office buildings with all these lights on all night long, and I just think to myself like, why do all those lights have to be on, right?
Yeah, I always think, I mean, like, my, my default assumption in in almost everything is like, it's always okay to consume less or to, or to travel less or to, you know, put let, you know, burn less fuel.
But going back to what you were saying about these housing compo- um, new housing developments, like I would love to see more communal spaces around, um, like those maker spaces that we have in the library. So around the lawnmower and, uh, you know, a lot of our appliances.
Do we all need our own lawnmower?
And we have just so many and more circular too, like more repair, more, again, these are things that are gonna make us climate resilient, our capacity and our business is resilient too. You know, we, we have an opportunity here to, it's not just about transforming the law so more housing is here. It's about transforming how we um, live our lives, how we relate to each other. Um, you know, you know, I I I I lost my car, Biggie Smalls.
You lost what, last week?
Car was named Biggie Smalls. And, uh, she was a Subaru Outback. I got her before I moved here. But when I told people I was moving to Colorado, I was living in Washington D S C at the time, they were like, oh, you got a Subaru, of course you got a Subaru. Um, and I loved him! But, uh, but, you know, I fought the rock and the rock won on I seventy a couple of months ago when the snow melts was happening and, you know, those rocks started getting into the highway and I missed it and well, I didn't miss it. I hit it right on, you know, on the, on the tire and it just clanked underneath it, but, you know, I I I've been really thinking, as I said, we got the one light rule, how am I gonna reduce my carbon footprint? What, what are the privileges that I have that make that easier for me to do that? That makes me in a position where I can live up to the responsibilities and I, and obligations that I have for those privileges. So I work remotely, so that I, you know, okay, I fly a lot for work. Well, there's a bus, it's right there. I can take it to the airport. But I also have meetings in Con- Com- um, Commerce City, right? That's a two hour and forty minutes each way.
On a bus?
Each way on the bus.
That's tough.
For a one hour meeting, right? And so those are the things where I'm like, oh, so I'm looking at car shares and, you know, what are all of the ways? And I'm also thinking if I, you know, I don't have children, so it makes it, again, very easy, much easier for me to, because I don't have to shuttle people around, I don't I, you know, again, you know, I'm, I recognize that we need to reduce our emissions and um, re- reduce our carbon footprint. And for those of us who can do that in whatever way, figure out that way and make those reductions.
Yeah.
But to say it's gonna be one way or another way, when we know that there's a spectrum of need without examining and meeting those needs before we make some policy changes, cuz a rebate's not gonna do it. A, a five hundred dollar rebate on a twelve hundred dollar bike ain't gonna cut it, right?
Okay.
And so these are the things, but going back to me, right? Cuz anything I'm asking anybody else, I'm trying to see for myself, how's this really work?
Yeah.
I will say, in the three months that I've been doing this bike around thing, one, I have an e-bike.
Yeah.
It's been awesome.
Yeah, that's how you get up the hill, you know?
I have a big hill I'm up, get up the hill. The quality of my life has increased. My, the pace of my life is slowed down. I have to be more mindful. I have to be more interconnected. I have to bum ride. Hey, I bum ride. Oh, we're gonna go down to Denver, can I bum a ride? But I love it cuz it makes, cuz then I have time with my friend as we go down, right? But then sometimes I have things where I gotta go meet somebody and it's a play and it ends late. And I'm down there at ten thirty at night and I don't feel comfortable getting on the bus by myself, right?
Yeah.
Um, what do I do then? You know, the cost of getting an Uber is is expensive and that's not something that I could do all the time, so. Or even sometimes, so I'm just really mindful about, you know, is the infrastructure, it's not just infrastructure that needs to be built. But it's also in a reexamination of even our whole economy around making sure that everybody has the economic uh, resources necessary to live a public transportation life, right? Uh, if anything, it's those who are, those who are in a higher wealth position who are in a better capacity to right now. Electric vehicles, right? I see reviens right around. I said like, if you're gonna do it, do it, right? Like, if you've got it, like, make that transition right now. Get the, get the solar on the thing, get the, you know, you're, they're, I think the mandate is for zero. If your house is at a certain square foot, it has to be zero. And I might think, well, can we even lower that? Can you get, can we go lower? Can you have to actually have to give into the grid, right? I'm just, I'm just, you know, we all have something. We all have these incredible gifts, these incredible uh, resources and assets to give back.
Well, I think that's, that's beautiful. I, I um, I really do, um, you know, in this, on this podcast, we, we talk about housing a lot, but I do think, I wanted to think about it in a very holistic way and, and not just like build lots of housing, right? But I do wanna push back on you.
Who's building the housing?
Oh, yeah, and how's it being, how's it being built? What's the carbon footprint of all the materials and all the, you know, and how long is it gonna last? Are we gonna, are we gonna recycle it in fifty years or two hundred years?
Well, and, you know, somebody was talking to me about three, three D housing. You know, and now that 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 technology is starting to be able to, you know, again, and and even just like, you were talking about like, can we build housing that has like a communal kitchen and then more room, right? Like, just rethink about, think differently about the types of housing that are there too, and that are available. Cuz it's my understanding in the conversations I've had with community in the ten years I've been here. Like, there used to be these larger traditions of community, like community houses and communal, communal, you know, kind of, um, you know, there's a kind of a larger house or different houses that would all, like, it's your kitchen and
Cohousing type stuff.
Yeah, those kinds of things and then just, I think we zoned our way out of it maybe potentially, is 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 what I've been told, but uh, but either way, um, you know, again, I, I I'm curious what you'd have to push back on, so I I'll just pause for that. Cuz, is there a specific policy that you wanna hear about?
Well, I mean
Cuz I feel like I'm down for giving occupancy, I'm down for amplifying density as long as it's not interfacing too much. As long as, one, as long as there's a plan for how we're going to balance the people that are gonna be here, and don't tell me that it's going to be, you know, we're gonna put some open space somewhere, like two little pieces and that's gonna offset it, cuz it's not.
Right.
So what's the question?
Yeah, well, um, I guess, I, I, when I think about like, um, you know, just come, come up with some hypothetical thirty year old person. However, however you wanna um, imagine them, or or it doesn't even matter how old they are. Um, but, but let's say they live in Boulder County somewhere.
Okay.
But they're between houses or they're thinking, they're trying to make an ethical choice about where to live. And they're thinking about their commute, what they can afford, uh, what their environmental footprint is. Uh, whether they feel good about the elbowing their neighbors out, you know, for, for something that's expensive perhaps. Um, and I, like, what I would like to do is give people that are thinking about where they wanna live more options to live in compact housing near where they work. Because I feel like that's much greener than, for example, billing, buying a new construction on the periphery, um, in, in Erie or Brighton or, you know, Firestone or whatever. You know, yeah, sure, you can drive to Firestone and, and then af- then you can afford a nice big house that you've imagined living in. Or, but is that, is that environmentally friendly to, to, uh, you know, keep expanding the Denver Boulder metropolitan area? And I, I really feel like every time we can build something environmentally friendly in Boulder, we're um, helping improve the choices that people will have for living lighter on the planet.
Mm-hmm.
And so, like, I understand that there's a concern about like billing, billing a bunch of housing at the airport from an environmental point of view, but I actually feel like on the balance, it's, it's really good to have people living there rather than in Firestone and Brighton, Erie, Lafayette, you know, um, where, where the, the, the infrastructure demands and the commuting times are, and, and, and also just the housing footprints themselves, you know, like, if I, if I go out into the excerpts and buy a large house with a three car garage, I, I find myself spending the next three or four decades just filling that house up with all the shit that I've bought at Costco and, you know. So where, where do you ever get to the, the point where it's like, I like the things that I have, I wanna live compactly with, with, with a few nice things and, and stop spreading my footprint, so. Um, when, when I, I don't, I don't, and I, what you said earlier doesn't really conflict with what I just said, except for the, I feel like there's maybe uh, some distance between us, policy wise perhaps, on how much housing we would want in Boulder.
Um, one, I think there's assumption that the people that would be living in the airport would be working here in Boulder, and I, I don't know if that's always, that's necessarily gonna be true. Um, I've actually seen, and it's something that I thought was real curious when I first moved here. So I've, I've, moving here, prior to moving here, I primarily only lived in big cities, New York, L A, D C.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I've lived in, in kind of suburbs in, in, in Virginia when I was early, younger, and I've had some times in more rural settings, but in shorter compasses. Largest is, actually, this is the longest I've ever lived anywhere, so ten years in Boulder. Um, or eleven. But I raise that because to me, it's not just about and this goes back to having a mono view of anything.
Yeah.
If we're only looking at housing without looking at workforce, then the question of how far do people have to drive? Or how, how far they commute, we're gonna, it's gonna be speculative because we're not working with our housing, with our workforce um, entities and agencies. So that's one. Um, the other piece is similar with transportation. So to me, it's not just a question, I'm sorry, this is why I cannot just talk about housing. And this is why I'm hopeful that we can help change and have a more nuanced and rigorous conversation about what we really need to be doing here, because it's a triangulation between housing, work and, and
Transportation.
Right, and transportation, so housing, work and transportation, right? These is like the three pillars. You could also put education here because again, that's just, you know, people have to go to schools. Well, cuz if you have kids or whatever, like, school is also a big pillar of your thing, of your life. Like, these are the a- the areas that you tend to stay grocery store, okay? But anyway, my larger point is, is these three. Um, and so for me, it's a very intimate conversation and relationship between our housing and human, and housing and human services, um, our workforce development and our business community, and then transportation, both the regional and state level along with federal, right? Um, that's the other big piece about my work is, I'm an intersectionalist, that's what I wanna bring to this council. It's not just a conversation about our local government, but how, where is the money in our relationship with Boulder County? What is the fiscal relationship? What is the people relationship, the in- interagency? Um, MOUs, agreements, roles and responsibilities? Does everybody know where we are on the bus when it comes to housing, when it comes to transportation, right? Um, and then it also goes to the state level, again, obviously coming off of Colorado Parks and Wildlife and Natural Area, um, the Department of Natural Resources. That is energy, that is water, that it, right, we are in intimate relationship with them. Yes, we have our own utilities. We are in relation, and then of course, we have the feds where I have a deep um, experience and relationship with, you know, the Forest Service, B L M. And of course, NOAA, both on the ocean side and the atmospheric, right?
This is Bureau of Land Management, just to be unambiguous.
Like, really trying because money, our money, people that we are all investing in. Those who are um, housed and those who are unhoused. Those who are um, citizens and those who are not, have paid in, have contributed to re- themselves and their ancestors to this, right? And so every piece of resources needs to be braided together to meet these demands, right? We are on my, our, my port, our port right now. It is what, August? Six?
Six, that sounds right.
It is.
Seventy degrees maybe?
Maybe, maybe, a strong sixty something. It's sixty something degrees. I can't, I don't have my glasses on. My larger point is this, our climate is changing. Mother Earth is saying the way you are living, little humans
Yeah.
is not the way that you're gonna keep living on my watch.
Yeah.
So, I, I told you about it in little whispers.
Yeah.
You know, in the seventies, you had the data and everything and y'all decided you were gonna do nothing. And here we are now, right? Here we are, it's cold, it's been raining. Uh, we have all these things that are saying change, change, we are having all these invitations to change.
Yeah.
That's it. These are invitations to change. And so this also means we have to change our discourse. We have been talking about housing ever since I moved here. Ever since I have moved here, and if anything, it's got worse. Sixty percent of my friend group, a good solid, have moved out of the city of Boulder.
Mm-hmm.
Because they can't afford it. So when you're talking to me about people considering to move here, the people who have lived here could not find ways and they wanted to, and it hurt. There was a lot of grief. So yes, our, our population in the city of Boulder has slightly declined, but every single city in this county has grown significantly.
Yeah.
We, and where are they going? Where are they gonna recreate at? We are in relation with them too. So this is what I'm saying. It's not just a specific conversation about housing in Boulder. It is a conversation about housing. It is a conversation about transportation, right? And how do we understand and pick apart who is responsible for what? A part of my candidacy is a just and joyous community. That means not only just public safety and policing, but joyous. How do we find the joy so we can come back together, right? So that we can tackle these hard, we can't only talk to each other when it's serious. If we only talk to each other
Yeah.
when we have a policy dispute, it is gonna be a problem. So this is also when I say joy, that's where the arts and the culture and all these pieces come into play. Even with the arts, I'm like, can we just have a whole thing about like, re- educating people on climate? We've all been miseducated about our climate unfortunately. We've all been miseducated about each other, right? You see Florida over there, you see them on their ancestral traditions of trying to use education as an oppressor, as a container of spirit.
Yeah.
Not as a liberator, right? In Colorado, last year, almost passed the birthright curriculum endorsed by the Florida Department of Education, only lost four, three. Four, three, y'all, four, three, here, right? Mothers in Liberty, here. Here we are fighting about housing, the very fabric of our democracy, our capacity. We, it's, it's, the housing is, is, is one, if we can't heal our relationship with each other, we will not solve housing. We will not solve transportation.
Yeah.
If we cannot sit in a room together and not just have respectful discourse, but a real deep human species universality, mutuality, which is what MLK called for, mutuality. That's what I'm interested in.
Okay.
I know, it's not always what you wanna hear, but
No, I, I think this is great. I
And I'll stand, I'll stand for you, honey.
I never think of housing as being something that's like in isolation. I think of it as being kind of at the convergence of all of these, of all of these issues.
Cuz the habitat can live without us.
The reason, the reason I think, like, especially to your point about uh, being joyous in community and whatnot. Like, uh, we, we live in a city that's handed over to cars where people drive everywhere for almost everything and then they, they, they pull into their garages and, and shut the door behind them. And I wanna live in a, a vibrant city that's walkable, that's um, free from cars, where I don't feel like my, my, my children, my neighbors are breathing their exhaust and um, uh, in danger. Uh in danger for their physical safety, then you know, we have all these vehicular deaths that that occur that we just have learned to live with. And so like when I think about what's possible with housing and and what's possible with the kind of community we could build. By having a um you know, more walkability, you know, places built for people rather than for cars. Which is what I feel like this whole neighborhood is built for cars. I feel like a lot of things come together with respect to environment, with respect to the arts, like we need artists more than ever, I wanna be able to walk out my front door. And and find out about a live band that's playing down the street or a poetry reading at the at the bar. Um I don't wanna have to like look at my calendar and drive somewhere to to and buy a ticket, right? I wanna live in a community that has lots of organic relationships.
We have that, there are parts of our city that has that, I have many friends who live that life, who don't have cars. Who ride their bike to work, who don't ride and don't have access to car, they don't borrow a car from somebody else, they that is what they do. And there are parts of our city where that's possible, but I have to also recognize that there are parts of our city where they need cars. Where we have not created a society and a economic reality that that a car is possible. And it's not just in this neighborhood, the neighborhood, it could be in a walkable city, but they can't have, they can't find a job in their walkable city. To be able to meet the needs of their family and so I am not a monolith. I am not gonna meet the needs of one person, that is your desire and that's great and I will work like heck. To make sure that our city is more walkable and more livable and that there are places where you can live and work, but the reality is. That's not the reality for everybody right now and that's not the desire for everybody. And so how do we create a dynamic city so if you need to have a car because you are a person with a disability? Because you have a more than one job, you have lots of children who need to be in lots of different places and you need a car. I'm not going to over police you, there's also something that I need to bring in here around the global north versus the global south on a larger. Because what you're talking about at a micro level is also happening at a mac at a macro level when we're talking about the reductions that need to happen globally. Uh we know that the global south has actually been robbed of, they extracted from to build out the global north, all of this is on the back.
Especially those rivians, you know, those those rivians require.
It is not, don't, please, it's not oppression Olympic or throwing the stones at anybody, it is literally every single. We all can take responsibility, at least for the ones of us who are citizens of the United States of America. I'm just gonna go on that, right? We have responsibilities around the world, right? Um and we are asking now, or we, the scientific community, I actually am not, the global north is often asking the global south. To make sacrifices and to regenerate at a pace that uh without resources that have already been taken from them. And so it just and I feel like sometimes that non-walkable city can come off as. An elitist privileged position because again, it's not, it it's often times when it's discussed. Not spoken of um from how does that meet the needs of a diverse community? And so again, and it's not to say that low income or poor people are not interested or wanna have a walkable, livable, all these things. It is the question of if if that is the case, do we have both the infrastructure? Um and the resources to meet the needs of everybody to be able to do that. And again, if I going back to people with disabilities, is that possible? Is that the best for them? I just don't wanna make decisions um by myself and quite frankly, to the to the piece around the just enjoy us. Another piece of the platform and the work I wanna do in this next council with the council in the city is strengthen our boards and commissions. Right now, they're not representative of all the community um members that we have here. And so if the places where commerce, you know, I want community input on where we want it to be walkable, livable, where do we want, right? And the current infrastructure that we have is our boards and commissions, but when I went and visited those, you know, and I was able to make two or three, I think. Uh one in person. I was not surprised, but um it was verified rather. Just again, just visually, I didn't have a chance to read or get their bios or and it wasn't a criticisms of the conversations that they were having, right? I felt their commitment, I felt their power, passion, I felt right the expertise that they're bringing to the table, I don't wanna take away from that. But I also felt when I was looking, wait, there's conversations missing, right, I was listening to the transportation conversation about the bikes, right? They eat not the e-bikes, but the trolley things, what are the scooters? I don't know, and they wanted to expand the program or parking or all the things and I just thought to myself and I said, oh, and I typed in the little thing, oh, what about people with disabilities? Because these things are parked in the sidewalks, I see them all the time and if you're not able to, you know, if you're a person that is. Um you know, has mobility needs, you you're not gonna be able to move that thing if you're by yourself, which then takes away from their independence. So that takes away their capacity to their job, right, so I asked like what are y'all doing to make sure? Oh, well, we have a, well, we know who's using them and I said, okay, well, you know, are you writing them up? Do they get a citation if they leave something in the middle of the sidewalk or you know? Oh, well, we don't really have, okay, well, I don't wanna expand a program if we're not sure about what the impacts on people with disabilities are gonna be, right? Um that's just one acute example, but um it's more of just, it's a yes and for me, I'm a yes ander. Like, yeah, okay, sure, and how are we gonna deal with this, this and this, I'm not saying no, I'm just saying. That's great, you want more housing, that's great, how are we gonna make sure that there's habitat and transportation to get there and? I'm not saying no, I'm just saying these are the other things that need to be considered, these are the other things that are impacted and this is where my pushback is is. I wanna hear about housing, but unfortunately, I don't see, or rather, actually, I've appreciated this conversation. Because now I can understand that you see this housing as the part of the ecosystem, but to me, I just I didn't see it that way. So that helps me to see how you see the ecosystem and that you are a part of that ecosystem, it's just like we're on different stars of it. And so like kind of how do I, you know, both understand and translate it into um so that it can meet that piece. So I I'm gonna, I'm still working on it, but I. I I don't, I don't feel like you only think housing is the most important thing. Uh but I I want more people, I guess also at the end of my tenure, I want people to uh be able to speak about the intersection. Of housing and habitat that we are a part and and I want them to get excited about like rebuilding our biodiversity and our like. Pollinators and our and our relation, just like we want, like you wanna enhance the relationship with each other through more communal spaces, which I'm also down for. Like we don't have a community center, really, we don't like that that that's like non-denominational, right, like that's just our cities that you can, you know, use, right? Uh I think there's a lot of opportunity for more communal spaces that can bring us together in creative ways. Um and I I'm I'm gonna give, I'm I'm open to ideas, so give me, give us some more thoughts on that. Um and 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 again, the commons, I'm also really vibing on the commons, I think one thing we haven't talked about is. Uh regenerative ag um in our city, another thing that not many people are talking about, but going back to housing, I'm gonna bring a whole bunch of people here, what are they gonna eat? Are we gonna ship it in? How do you think this food gets here? And most of our things that we grow here gets exported. So like if we want more people, then I need to build up our, you know, we also need to build up and reclaim our agricultural traditions, right? I went to CU Boulder, they have some great programs there, CSU has great programs, you know, there's tons of ingrained masa seed foundation. There I mean, there's so many folks that are building and trying to hold on to this heritage and. Again, I'm not saying we're gonna have these expansive farms, I mean, like permaculture and all the different things, right, if we're building these houses, like I I don't wanna just see eight garden beds. I wanna see like real advancements on like and again, the same thing with this thing, like, yeah, there's gonna be housing up there, but where's where they gonna eat at? Do they have to drive to do this far? Like we have this one great farmers market down here, should we have another one? Oh, oh, maybe we need to have more, right? Like these are the kinds of conversations, like farm to table is not just an evening event that we do one time in the fall. Farm to table is, you know, and even you know, CSA, I love being a part of a community supported agriculture and and be in a in relation. But you know, it can't be transactional where I just go there, get my thing and leave, that's not community, community isn't a a an extraction. A transaction, community is something that's a part of the fabric every day, it's it's a part of the routines and rituals of who we are.
I always think about when I drive northeast out of Colorado, when you see these large farms. That are growing corn presumably for ethanol, it just like, ugh, it's like the the our mindset. About where food comes from and what our land is for, it's um it's it's broken in some pretty fundamental ways. And um I I really love, I I love CSAs too and Nicole Spear actually talked about. Agro voltaics uh on a recent conversation, which was um how do you take these, some of these solar farms and and add some.
Yeah, that's happening. Although that's the other thing with the, so similar to the ag and when you see these big things, that's how I feel when I see solar fields. And so I'm just trying to find some balance there as well in in um it it I was just reading. So I read a lot, I'm such a scholar, I I love learning, um and again, this is why I love this place, I do feel like we love learning here. But I'm learning more and more about, you know, the the energy demands of our renewables. And so again, it's about that, you know, I I drive by Commerce Commerce City and I think eighty-five percent of everything that they produce is within Colorado. So again, I might not be eating that ethical ethanol and I might be a vegan, I might be, you know what, I'm using that energy, I'm using a thing, right? So we're all a part of this, we all play and it's not oppression Olympics, you do that and you do that, look in the mirror, what can you do?
I always come back to, it's always okay to consume less.
That is another big, and this go, mama 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 earth is saying this too. It's always good to consume less and again, in in all of the ways, right? I think of um going back to the arts and what I'm grateful for about the role that they play is it's stroking the imagination. It's healing the spirit, it's healing that intergenerational trauma or chronic trauma, it's helping with the chronic illness. It's helping with our mental um our mental health, it's helping, right, like all of these things.
I'm really not being facetious, but like a a poetry reading has very low carbon footprint and and like. It's really and and the and people who participate in that really get something meaningful out of it, right? And so and I the reason I say this is cuz I do standup comedy and um it's it's a great way to get like a thrill and a and a there's a there's a. There's a challenge to it that I really enjoy, there's connecting with people, but it's also like, I had to give up skiing at some point. Because for a variety of reasons that don't matter, but 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 it turns out that I can be happy, like I can look in the mirror and say, hey, I can be happy. Without skiing every weekend or without planning my life around some future cabin I wanna buy up in the mountains or something like that. Like there's ways of being um uh connecting with people and doing things that are thrilling and interesting and wonderful. That are low carbon footprint and 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 reading poetry is one of those things, you know. And the arts, you know, the arts in general are kind of kind of like that, you know.
And, right? Um so I too have been um reimagined the way that I recreate. Um I actually took up cross-country skiing cuz I felt like, oh, I can do it on a different path, I don't have to, you know, there's not as much infrastructure that's needed for me to do this. Uh we also have a dog, so it's nice to have a dog with us when we're doing things. Um and again, it's not a criticism on other people's reality, but it's also a recognition of like, oh, you know, as my consciousness. You know, as my awareness around these things, um and my understanding deepen, but I also recognize that there have been a group of people who have been denied that experience. And who am I, like I got it, so it's not, I don't necessarily feel I I. And 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 going, that's actually goes back to this global north, global global south conversation, right, it's like, oh, I'm good, so y'all need to act this way. Well, easy for you to say, you already did some things, right? And so I also am mindful about that. Um and that reality as well, so I I I am I am passionate, uh compassionate to both and also recognizing. And that's why I'm I'm I participate in this uh Office of Tourism, Destination Storage Ship, how do we reimagine? How, you know, working with our, you know, I forgot what the two big um ski companies that we have here. But you know, they have an interest to, you know, make sure that they're being regenerative in every single way with their wastewater and management and all the things, right? Because it's in their livelihood is is attached to that, even though it's, you know, our life, all of our lives and their livelihood, right? And so and that's something else I keep in mind, I also think of the farmers and ranchers that I got an opportunity to meet in when I was in Colorado Parks and Wildlife. And again, you know, there's this feeling of like certainly we wouldn't get along because, but as I started chatting with them and as I went on farm tours. And talk with them about the land that they've had and their families for, you know, however many generations and yes, that is not and time on continuum and. But it is relation. And I hear them pained about some of the things that are happening, pained about, you know, feeling forced into a corner around some of these practices. That they don't feel are wanting to do and they, you know, and they're they're great, great parent, great grandparents.
Practices, you mean like specific.
Techniques and and some and a lot of them are innovating around it because they know that that's not the way. But you know, when I talk about, you know, learning about their finances and all this stuff, I was like, oh, you don't own the land, oh. I just had been taught like, oh, they own the land and they're just, you know, you don't care about the animals and I go in there, I'm like, oh, oh, you're crying about something, right? I just, you know what I mean, like you get in there, you're like, oh, you're you're. Habitat for humanity and you have habitat for farmers and you're ranchers and you have these, you reintroduce this, you know, native species. That was gone into your thing and you're working with all these biologists to do this thing and and I'm not saying everybody's doing that. But I've been told this one way about people over there.
Yeah, right.
And then I got over there and I was like, oh, and there are people that way.
Yeah, right.
But there's a whole lot of other people that aren't. And there was a whole and similarly, when I, you know, when they got to know me, they were like, oh, wait, oh, city girl. Wait, or Boulder girl, right? This whole wolf thing just went down, so when I go to meet her somewhere, tell some people, I'm in Colorado Parks and Wildlife, they're like, and I live in Boulder, they're like. Oh, but I'm like, hey, I live wildlife too, I care about what's going on, you know what I mean, like? Don't judge just off of one data point, one data point is not enough to make a decision, right? One data point ain't gonna get you a trajectory, you need at least three to get a trajectory, right? And if I'm the first, right, and so just, how do we create those spaces though, in all seriousness? How do we create those spaces where that interconnectedness can go? Cuz that's another thing, when we do all this housing, where the water gonna come from? Yeah, we got senior rights, but where's it come from? It does not come from Boulder, it comes from the continental divide. It comes, it passes other communities that need water for their residents to get to us. Because we happened to have been established before them. We had the privilege, like I've read A Ditch in Time, I mentioned that before, I don't know if you had a chance to read it. A Ditch in Time, it's the story of Denver water, uh so you just get the water infrastructure in Boulder, uh sorry, in all of Colorado. Um and so Cheeseman and you know, all of these places, like the tunnels and all the names, they're water people, right? That's what I ascertained when I started reading up on these kinds of things. Um and it's dirty and it's messy and it's, they did steal it. Just like we stole this, like we. Actually, my ancestors helped to pay for this land, it's not something I can be proud of, the Louisiana Purchase. That doesn't make me, that doesn't instill, that 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 instills me with both responsibilities and obligations to our indigenous, right? Because um I have the opportunity to live here. Uh and thrive, uh and you know, all the things. This door chip that they did, this is, um I'm a guest in that way. But I also have obligations and responsibilities to my ancestors whose labor were used for this land. So even though you may not see us here, we're all over here. Because without us, there is none of this, without enslavement, there is no Colorado. Because we would not have had the money to buy the Louisiana Purchase. And the only reason the Louisiana Purchase was happening, the only reason France wanted to sell this very valuable land. Is because they were in a fight with the Haitians for the Haitian Revolution and they needed money. And so they had to sell this land.
Out.
And so as a African American, I have obligations to my ancestors whose slave labor were used to buy this land. I also have obligations to my indigenous brothers and sisters and others, two spirits. Um their the both their ancestors and their descendants, to be in relation, to understand. So again, in all this housing and habitat, where are indigenous brothers, sisters and others are, where's that conversation at? Do they get housing? Are they a part of this housing conversation? I haven't heard anybody talk to me about how they are engaging with Ute, Arapaho, Cheyenne, Shoshone. In this housing conversation and I'm not saying it's a criticism, I'm just saying, we are only thinking about ourselves. And this mentality will not get us there. And when I just say ourselves, I mean our community and what we think our community is. To me, our community is every being on this planet and I know that sounds grandiose, but I've spent the last forty-nine years. Getting to know as many different ethnicities, languages, races, places, people. Putting myself in as many different divergent places so that I can know what it's like to be the other. So that I can get a better understanding of why people make the choices that they make. Like I, once I understood that people were being isolated on purpose through our housing policy, our work policies are right.
That's actually where my, my mind was going.
Then I see it, it gets very easy, then I'm not mad at any one person.
The current structures of our housing are so exclusionary and so othering. And so like it's, it's, you know, we talk about the, the wall, the invisible wall around Boulder. And that, that to me, it's like right at the core that is, is a housing policy that says, I have this land. And I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna share it with anyone, I've, I've, I've cordoned it off and I'm, in fact, to such an extent that I'm not gonna let my neighbors do that. We, and so this is a, this, these are policies that go back, you know, um many decades that, that were kind of very intentionally an exclusionary.
The same is for Walder Policy though, I, I don't, this is where I'm trying to explain to you is. The same exclusions that you see here and feel are the same exclusions that you benefit from when it comes to water, when it comes to electricity, right? And so if we're saying that about housing, then we also need to, in the same breath. Talk about water and our responsibility is having senior water rights. That means we need to be, we have communities here that have poor quality, quality because of those same rules. So I agree, let's unpack those rules, but it needs to be in tandem with the water policy. With our ha, our habitat and our wildlife policies, right? It can't be in isolation and so that's where I'm asking our fellow Boulderites, right? Our voters, hey, if you vote for me, a vote for me is a vote of saying, hey, right? Where's the intersect, how, how does this issue connect with these other issues that are critical for that issue to succeed? Housing will not succeed in isolation, it must be in tandem with workforce and transportation, right?
Definitely.
Coupled with governance, right? So who is making what decision where, right? And I don't even call governance, cause people don't even feel like they're policymakers. And I'm like, do you have rules in your house? Do you have rules for yourself? Then you are a policymaker. The fact that we have had making people think that they don't understand policy or that they don't set policy or they can't understand policy. Oppressor wins if I get you to think you don't get, you don't have power. You have power over every single thing, decision that we make in our lives. I mean, the, my favorite thing, the, the best thing that keeps my spirits up sometimes is. The fact that we have made money a real thing. The fact that we have made money a real thing disconnected from silver mold or whatever, which is also a value judgment that we made. Others, we made up. That inspires me. I get really geeked out.
Because, because you're just saying, because humans have this collective creative capacity.
That and we can believe in each other over audacious things. That's exciting.
This paper, this paper means something.
We literally made some make. And now it's not even a paper, now it's a piece of plastic, remember credit cards came out, we were like, really? We're just gonna use a piece of plastic? Now we have a thing where you just tap it? Or you just send it, I don't know, right? But I just say that to say, our human capacity to dream, to actually create something. Out of literal nothing. Whether that be intangible or tangible, that gets me really exciting.
Absolutely.
But this excitement, this energy cannot be harnessed when we're having. Conversations that are not um interconnected. You know, and so that's all, that's all I'm wanting is, hey, if we're gonna talk about this, and we need to innovate on, not on the housing and the, like I said, the garden business, like energetically. Like how is their energy like, not just like their chakras, but like. The energy of the building, right? Like is it, you know, not just zero, but like less than and how are we, how are we innovating, innovating? How are we working with N-Car and Noah and U-Car and CU Boulder sitting right here? Innovating on every single level, like this is what we do. We've got a Boulder Boulder, we even have a marathon, half marathon named Boulder Boulder. Let's need Boulder Boulder, that's what the world, what the world needs now. He's bold, bold Boulder.
That sounds like a, that sounds like a closer maybe.
I know, I feel like, ah. Thanks, man.
Love it, thank you so much for your time.
Of course, of course, and again, I know my positions will evolve as my consciousness and understanding evolves. As, right, but I'm just speaking again from the expertise experience that I've had and seen, both here, in the state and around the world, right? I'm also thinking around the world, how do decisions that we make in Boulder affect people around the world, affect habitat around the world?
Amen. Gonna find me a residential pedestrian district where I can gracefully grow older. Gonna spend my remaining years. Sharing Boulder. Thank you for listening to Sharing Boulder. Please support the podcast by sharing it with your friends and neighbors. You can contact me at linktree.com/philipogren. Which you can find by duck, duck going, link tree, Philip Ogren. Or by visiting sharingboulder.us, where you can also find show notes and previous episodes. This episode of Sharing Boulder was produced by Philip Ogren and the music was created by Nathaniel Ogren and Sac Lunch. Keep sharing Boulder.